I'm going to call the planning board meeting of September 24th to order. Our first item of business this evening is the presentation by Gary Kleiman, our former chair, but now co-chair of the Star Met reuse committee. An update and discussion of the site 2229 Main Street that is being, I don't know, evaluated for different things. Let us know.
Great, thanks for having me. I, oh, perfect.
Oh, and before I go, I have to make the standard statement that this meeting is being videotaped. And if you want to record the meeting, you may, but please make arrangements for that so that you don't disrupt the meeting if you do. Sorry about that. All right.
So you may or may not be aware or recall from the envisioned Concord long-range plan that there is a approximately 46 acre parcel of land at the far tip of West Concord located at 2229 Main Street. That has been for approximately a decade in the process of being cleaned up. It was designated a super fund site sometime in the eighties and, you know, most of the nineties and the 2000s has been under various states of cleanup. The government is now reaching the last phase of cleanup. And before they can complete the cleanup of this site, they need to know what the potential uses for that site might be long after the cleanup is completed and the site is actually used. Because that will determine how they finish various parts of the parcel. Now, the town of Concord does not own this site. It's a potential opportunity that the town could take ownership of this site at some point in the future. If, right now, there's about $22 million in liens against the parcel, so we wouldn't want to take ownership until the liens are cleared. It is still in the state of being cleaned up. We wouldn't want to take ownership until we're assured that it's being cleaned up. So there are still a number of legal issues that need to be cleared up. But at some point in the future, if there was a 46 acre parcel of land that was free of liens, clean to a residential standard, it represents, as we indicated in the long-range plan, a tremendous opportunity for any number of things that the town has identified as needs. Could be open space, you know, sustainable landscaping, could be housing, affordable housing, senior housing, ag worker housing, could be recreation space, indoor recreation. Nobody has made any decisions about what potential uses are appropriate for the site. Nobody has made any decisions about what the town thinks might be the best or highest purpose of this land. But it became clear to the town that if we want to see an opportunity to take ownership of this land at some point in the future, we need to state now what potential uses we would like to see there so that the cleanup can be completed in a manner that's compatible with those future potential uses. So the select board, in their infinite wisdom, followed through with the long-range plan recommendation that we figure out that plan. So they appointed a committee. There's seven of us on the committee and we are basically beginning an outreach and engagement process with various committees that may have a stake in the use of land if the town should ever come into its possession. And of course, planning was high on our list. So I'm basically here tonight to make an appeal for you guys to be engaged in this process. Our timeline right now is about 18 months. We'd like to, you know, by the end of 2020 have a plan to deliver back to the select board of the uses that we would, you know, think makes sense for the town. And we are beginning with an open public forum, October 17th. There'll be two sessions, one from five to seven and one from seven to nine. It would be great to see at least one representative of the planning board attend that session. You'll learn a lot more than what I can say tonight. We have some great handouts that are already, you know, I think maybe more included in your packet. They'll be given out at that evening and you'll also hear from the consultant on the project, Skio, who's working with US EPA and the town to help us engage and figure out what a potential list of options would be for the site. And then based on that, we'll move forward and try and narrow the list or develop the list, do outreach around a list. The one thing I would call your attention to are the several principles that our committee has already come up with in thinking about uses. There are four main principles that we have identified that we think are really important to consider. Given that the 46 acre parcels of land don't come around in Concord every day, we think that this is just really far too valuable to, it's actually on the last page of the principles. The very last page has this diagram that shows four principles. It's far too valuable to consider any one single use. We really think that this parcel needs to satisfy or address multiple needs of the town to be successfully utilized. So we should be thinking about what are a list of, I don't know, six or eight compatible uses that could, you know, fit on the site. They don't all need to be on the same portion, but we really think that multiple integrated uses is a key principle. Second, obviously, environmental stewardship. The town has embraced the sustainability principles. Our long-range plan was built around the principle of sustainability. So we think whatever redevelopment or uses for the site need to adhere to the highest level of environmental integrity. Fiscal sustainability, this comes straight out of the long-range plan also. This clearly is a priority. I said at another meeting recently, you know, I feel like in the long-range plan, we actually dropped the ball on this. While we pointed out, we maintain fiscal sustainability as one of the core principles in the town's long-range plan. We didn't go far enough in that document in describing how to be fiscally sustainable in pursuing all of the recommendations in the long-range plan. I think that, you know, that's something we need to do better in laying out the plan for 2229 Main Street redevelopment. We really need to go beyond just a statement of fiscal sustainability. We need to identify uses that will enable us to finance this project in a fiscally sustainable manner. And then finally, community synergy. You know, obviously, we want to strengthen our community, but also our relationship with the neighboring towns and the neighboring areas. So then there are a number of residential neighborhoods directly abutting this parcel. It is on the border with Acton, with Maynard, and it's not that far from Sudbury. So we would like to see this not only service the town in a way that, you know, is useful to the town, but something that, you know, works harmoniously with the neighbors that are right there. Rather than just create a, you know, DPW salt depot which doesn't really do anything for them, it would be great if we can, you know, pursue some of the opportunities that we've discussed, like a natural viewing area for wildlife habitats, you know, outdoor education where they could participate, you know, neighbors and community nearby towns could participate. Maybe, you know, group housing that would be open to not only Concord residents, but also neighboring residents. So thinking about community synergy is another principle that we haven't heard. So I'll stop there. I mean, you can look at yourself at some of the potential uses we came up with at just a straw man. But again, I just want to reiterate, we have not made any decisions yet. We're just beginning the outreach process and are very open to your suggestions, but mainly just wanted to get your participation in the process.
Gary, do you want to say what these mean?
Sure. So that, yeah, is a map of the site. And basically, I'll draw your attention to parcel B up there. That was the former holding basin. And that is the one area that has more stringent restrictions on it than the rest of the parcel. That is the one area, that .8 acre area that will actually have, I don't know, something like an 80-foot deep concrete dome around it that is just going to lock off that part of it. So it will have to be capped with something like a parking lot or something, you know, very rigid. The rest of the parcel will have, anywhere where there was contamination, you're going to have basically 10 feet of brand-new clean soil chucked in. And it'll be, you know, completely pristine and clean, you know, at the surface level. So you could really do anything with any of it. The consultant, Skio, has identified the A parcels, A1, A2, A3, and A4, as areas where we might think more openly about redevelopment as opposed to the C1 and C2 areas where we might consider thinking more about open space and maybe, you know, landscape resiliency, things like that. Because in the middle of C1, there's that sphagnum bog. That's wetlands anyway. So it would be subject to all kinds of, you know, restrictions for development. Anyway, it is wetlands. And it is this beautiful habitat that it would be a shame to ruin anyway. So, you know, we've kind of been thinking along the lines of, yeah, this would make great nature viewing. Maybe an educational center could be located on top of it or a parking lot with a nature viewing area over here that could have some outdoor educational space that, you know, could have these viewing areas. If you see the topography, you know, incredibly steep drop-off right here. So you're sitting right here, you're perched over this magnificent view of the bog and, you know, a lot of birds and other habitat down in this natural area. And, you know, you could have some trails perhaps that go around the periphery, connect into Thoreau Hills. This is Camp Thoreau. The town, as you guys know, on Forest Ridge Road, has been beneficiary of a number of little parcels of land that connect around to some trail networks around Camp Thoreau and around Black Birch. So tying into those trails might be an opportunity. This could also be open space. It could also be redeveloped. So we haven't made any decisions about these other areas. This is a very peaked hill right now. It has been suggested, one option, if we want to max out development on the site, we could level that hill and have another area for development. But this really, A1 is prime development landscape because it was the former footprint of the facility. So that's just a big, flat, concrete capped area right now. So if you were going to put a big building, seems like this would be a good place to put it. It's already ready for that. Minuteman Arc is right here. So if one wanted to think about additional program space for people with developmental disabilities, Minuteman Arc could tie in something right here, maybe an additional group home. Or maybe you want to do it as part of mixed-use housing, you know, on Site A1 and maybe have accessible playground space or, you know, there's all kinds of possibilities. We haven't really gone into the possibilities, but just to orient you a little bit around the site, you know, this would probably be where development occur. This would have to be something rigid. This is probably going to be open space. And this is, again, more sort of wetlands area and probably will need to be related to drainage of the site because this does drain down across into the Asfit River. So it would be very complicated, I think, to sort of level this area out, given its relationship to the wetlands and the drainage on-site.
Couple of questions. So first, one, you talked about 10 feet of new fill being put in. But where, I mean, clearly, it's not going to go over the wetlands, right? Are you not going to put 10 feet of, so where is all this fill going?
The contamination was, when there was contamination, it was limited mostly to this area, the holding pond, and then this secondary area. So the 10 feet of new fill would basically be where contaminated soil has to be or has been removed.
Okay.
So it's mostly in here. And when the concrete path that is here is removed and 10 feet are excavated and chucked off-site, then one source of clean new fill could be this hill. Because if we wanted to flatten that out, there's a lot of clean, you know, never-used soil there that could just be spread out. This sweeping's area has some contamination that would have to be excavated and removed, I believe. And so that would also probably require some fill. But the point is that after the cleanup is complete in three to four years, my understanding is that all of the parcel will either have been completely uncontaminated or anything contaminated will have been removed with at least 10 feet from the surface down to any area where there may be potential residual. There may be some solvents that are still in the groundwater and things like that. So they have an active pumping system that's going to be operating for another 30 or 40 years that will be just, you know, cleaning out the groundwater that flows under the, well, under the surface, you know, below 10 feet.
Yeah, like the one across the street.
Yeah, 30, 40 feet below the surface, the groundwater is flowing across. And before it enters the Acton watershed, they have a pumping fleet system up there.
Is A2 wooded and more or less in a natural state?
It is a steep hill. It is, yes, wooded, completely wooded and in a natural state, and it's a big, steep hill. So as you drive down 62, you kind of see that big hill on your left and there's that.
Yeah, why not just leave that? I mean, sounds like flattening the whole thing sounds kind of.
I would welcome your feedback on that. That sounds like a good idea to me, but I think there are other members of the committee that seen opportunities, so let's see.
Gary, what happens to land if the town doesn't choose to, I mean, are, would this, these plans are, if the town acquires the land?
Well, at this point, I don't know that there's anybody else who's interested in acquiring the land. So, you know, I think the government is looking for a plan to complete the cleanup in a way that is most likely to meet potential future uses. So.
It's so it's.
It's basically, I think it's an opportunity for the town. If we can basically suggest how we want this finished and they'll finish it that way, seems like a good idea to make that recommendation.
Right, I'm just wondering, I mean, so I don't know how the land is disposed to the town. Is, is, would the town acquire it from the government or from the lien holders? Or, I'm just, and then I'm wondering what happens if, if there's a cost associated or a overhanging liability associated, if we choose not to get it, who does it go to?
Linda, do you have?
So I can just comment on part of that. A lot of the liens against the property are federal. And since the cleanup is a federal project, you know, and other superfunds have gone through this as well, you know, there, some of that has worked out. And the federal government is looking for a responsible, you know, a likely responsible party, which is why they're anxious to have an entity like Concord indicate their interest in wanting to take this over because then they can work with a responsible party as they put, you know, do all the various pieces of this process in terms of cleaning up and getting it ready. There are some other liens, there are many liens against this property that are not federal. And so, you know, that gets complicated. But that, other superfund projects go through the same thing and it gets worked out. I don't know, that's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't think the town would take it until all of that's worked out. So it's kind of, somebody else is probably going to work that out. But it does seem like it's an opportunity for us to.
And then are some of what you're thinking about in terms of redevelopment? Is that, it looks like there's some things that would maybe be town facilities, some things that may be, I mean, like I'm imagining if you're doing senior housing, maybe bringing in a commercial developer to do that on behalf of the town? And I, well, bringing in, it essentially becoming, it's a town to master developer that may be bringing in different groups to develop portions of it?
Yeah, all of those are possibilities. And right now, we're seeking feedback on what people think makes sense. I think what you're describing is very likely, yeah, we probably would. You know, given the fiscal sustainability principle, I think you're going to have to have some revenue generating activities on there if the town are going to be developing it. I mean, you know, de Maximus or, you know, the government who's doing the cleanup, they're happy to just flatten the whole thing and leave a big parking lot. They're happy to plant trees and leave the entire thing as green space. But I think they're also happy to tailor it and customize it as a potential future party would like to see it. So, you know, we have a lot of options. And I think within the scope of those principles we laid out, you're going to have to have something that generates some revenue in order to do anything other than trees or a parking lot.
I, I like your, the one you haven't mentioned, but that's on your list is municipal use in that, you know, we have this complex right here that needs redevelopment. And to, you know, instead of trying to construct it in place, to have a greenfield site that you could put the public works department, you know, and make a whole brand-new construction and then move people in there and then open up this site, which is walking distance to the village center for housing. It's like, it seems like a great option. I mean, public works doesn't need to be next to the village center.
Which is, which is why it's great to have participants from the planning board, as well as from the public works commission, come to this forum. Because we've already done some outreach with public works. They've indicated that there are not a lot of uses that they see for this site besides using it for salt storage. So.
Because, I don't really understand.
Because Ming could talk more about.
It's too far out of town. So to send out, to send out a plow, it's not a centrally located. So, you know, you would, you would go out.
Never stopped us before, the buses.
I think it'd be a great conversation.
Yeah, it's like.
Maybe they hadn't thought about the potential reuse of this, you know, they were just going to think about.
Yeah, I mean, this site is a real prime site for residential.
It's a good, good discussion, yeah.
So, I also, I know I said it a long time ago, but, you know, this would be a better site for Junction Village than the site that Junction Village is going into. And that, you know, if housing was put there, that people that could actually use the rail trail, use the village center shopping, you know, the transit, I mean, all the commuter rail, other than, you know, the residents that are there are less likely to avail themselves of all those facilities. It would be an improvement.
So that I would keep in mind because by the time this site has not only been cleaned up, but then is developed, we'll probably have Junction Village already fully subscribed and probably be in need of additional.
Well, yeah. What is the timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, it'll probably be four or five years before the cleanup is complete.
I see.
And the town could potentially take ownership.
And then after that redevelopment, many years.
And if we did take ownership in five years from now.
Right, right. It's like 10 years, 10 years.
If we give it to Junction Village, it probably, yeah.
Dedication of the site, yeah, okay.
So are we to the point where we've done an assessment of what it might cost to acquire the site? Like what portions that we would expect liens to be forgiven or would settle versus that we would take on? And what the cost would be of figuring out the liability issues and, okay, so we're not quite, we're not there yet.
I think all we have is just guidance of other superfund sites. We've seen how this has played out before.
And it's close to zero would be the cost. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, basically.
I mean, there's a lot of costs, there are administrative costs to acquire it, but the land itself.
There's no reason for the town to take it if you have to pay.
And then what, so when you say that they're looking for feedback on how to finish it, are you, are you saying that they're willing to remediate it to different standards based on what we, what they potentially do?
The decision, the order of decision or whatever the official thing has already stated that it will be cleaned up to a residential standard.
Okay, so that's settled. So the things that are at, that potentially could be, they could do differently are just like landscaped versus pervious versus impervious or? I'm just interested to know like what the menu of options is that they're saying. Because even if we didn't know what we were going to do with it or whether we wanted to acquire it, we could still have a preference on how they finish it, actually.
Right. If they're going to finish it for a parking lot, they would do something very different than if they're going to finish it for like a forest. You know, in terms of under, you know, subsurface drainage and things like that, they would. So just in preparing how they will finish the site as a clean up to a residential standard, they just need to know what the eventual use would be so that they can finish it from 10 feet down up the right way.
And is there a timeframe in which they need feedback from the town on that?
And that's, so we have sort of an 18-month schedule because by the end of next year, that's kind of when they need to start knowing. I think it probably could go two years, but 18 months is really, I think, what they're looking for.
And B has, B has to be a parking lot?
Or B has to be paved, do you think?
Paved, paved, basically.
You see concrete, don't you?
It doesn't, I'm not entirely sure. The consultant will be at the public forum and can say more about it. I know that there are more donations on how that could be fixed. I think that it has to have a rigid cap. Though, that would be consistent with the parking lot. It could be.
Could be a building also, it doesn't matter.
I don't know. Can ask that on 17th. And somebody else, guys.
We're hooked, right, Matt? Yeah, we're interested.
Lot of possibilities.
Great, so we'll see somebody on the 17th. And the 5:00 PM and the 7:00 PM will be at the townhouse, I think they're here on the second floor.
Okay.
Great, you're cool.
Thank you.
Well, that puts us at past 7:25, so we can take our second item on the agenda. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Thanks.
Which is our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals about the application of Concord Culinary Homes LLC for a special permit under section 76, 10, and 11/6 of the zoning bylaw for a four-unit planned residential development at 430 Old Bedford Road. So we have a draft report that's been submitted to us by our town planner and.
A draft letter.
Sorry, a draft letter. And I'd like to collect any comments that people have on it so that we can finalize it. I mean, I can go ahead if others don't want to leap to the fore here. So the very first one that I have is actually on page two. There are these three paragraphs after, that start, the first one starts with, the applicant states that. And, you know, I think they're basically a paraphrase of the applicant's submission. And I don't really think that they're necessary and/or have the appropriate tone for our letter. I think that these points are really all covered later in the document and that they could just simply be cut. I think that the only exception to that is just that maybe having a bullet at the end of the prior list that just mentions that there are common gardens that are proposed for the center of the property. So you see what I mean? It just is, you know, a lot of marketing language and I think, again, all of those points are covered in our.
So just delete that.
I think those three paragraphs, no, those three, there are three paragraphs that start with, that first one is, the applicant states that, and then.
So delete that.
Yeah, and then there are two paragraphs that follow that that are sort of the same sort of thing. Different, different material, but same concept. Again, I don't know if others disagree, but it struck me that they weren't needed.
I'm, so you're saying that this paragraph begins, the applicant states, then all of the homes and the farmhouse, those three paragraphs?
Yeah. Again, if you go through the letter, there are lots of other places where we discuss those things.
Yeah.
And there's a list ahead that says what they're doing, you know, on page one.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a sensible modification, agreeing also with the idea that you bring up as part of the bulleted list and things, in, in, in bulleted list immediately above the common garden, the note about the common garden areas.
Yeah.
Okay. So stopping at a variety of passive and active gardening areas.
Yeah.
And move that up to a bullet?
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, then in section ten dot two dot six.
What page?
Oh, gosh, I gotta open this thing up. I've got my comments open and I'll have that open.
Ten dot two dot six.
Page six.
Okay.
Um, there, there's just a typo. It's uh, need to change if to is. Yeah, access to the site is from Bedford Street.
Yeah.
Okay, then moving on down to um, ten dot four dot one dot one. Clause A and clause D, both of them state. That the site is within zone two of a town of Bedford public water supply and is required to provide the highest and best practical method of treatment. Now, I don't, I mean, I, I guess we note this. But I don't really see any indication that the applicant's plans actually meet that standard. And is that because making such a determinations outside of her purview? And if, if so, why are we bringing all this up?
Um, so that's part of their stormwater drainage review that was done by Concorde Public Works Engineering. Under Matt, the mass P E P stormwater standards.
So I guess we should just note that they actually, you know, that, that the, it was reviewed and they appear to meet that or something, you know? Cause right now it just says they're required to do this. It doesn't say their performance against that requirement.
So, so. So it would just be furthermore. CPW engineering.
I think you guys just say, yeah, CPW engineering reviewed this and, and.
Notes, the site is within.
Meets his requirements or something.
Yeah, so that's part, that was part of their um, stormwater drainage.
Okay.
Requirements.
Great. Um, then ten dot four dot two dot three. Um, and so this is one, I think that we just need to have some discussion on the board. This is about the concept of diversity. And, you know, I, I am very, uh. I, I think that we should be clear that, you know, in the bylaw, there are really three different kinds of diversity, right? The diversity is the size of the units, the type of the unit and the price of the unit. So when we bring up other kinds of diversity, like bedrooms on the first floor versus the second floor. Or that, uh, you know, sustainable agriculture, neither of those, I think. Is at least from our bylaws perspective for the PRD, something that is defined as diversity. So I would suggest striking this last half of this paragraph. That starts with the diversity of two units with master bedrooms on the first floor. In other words, just leave it to mention the diversity that is there. Which is basically the minimum, but it does in each of those three character uh, criteria, does have a minimum level of diversity. That, that is specified as, you know, written in our bylaw. So do people have an opinion about that?
I'm just trying to follow along, got a little bit behind you. So which sections do you wanna preserve and which do you?
So I wanna preserve the first half of that paragraph under ten four two three. And cut the last half that starts with the, the, the latter half of the sentence that says the diversity of two units with master bedrooms on the first floor. And two units with all the bedrooms on the second floor will appeal to different population segments.
So you're just saying after the word, um.
And so I just want a period.
House and barn are being preserved, period.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, again, we could in the future include other types of diversity, but we don't right now. So I think it wouldn't be appropriate for us to cite this as diversity to the ZBA.
I agree with that. And I, I think that's good. It, we mentioned it elsewhere about that because of the size of the. The number of units that achieving diversity is.
I think that challenge is worth noting.
Right, so that, that's noted elsewhere, so I think that's fine to remove this.
And then I did also, I think was persuaded that. The comment about that, you know, we had comments from a butters, but we also had comments from others in the neighborhood. So I think that, you know, to note that that was not just a butters, it was. And I forget exactly where that was.
It's on the first page.
Yeah. So those are my, my comments.
So are you suggesting on that first page where we said? In reaching as a recommendation, um. We, you know, consulted all these things as well as numerous letters and emails from a butters?
No, from the public.
From, and changing that to the.
Yeah, I think that that's better. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, before I forget, I highlighted on page thirteen. The date for. Two of the sheets for the farmhouse and the barn will have a September. I think it's September ninth date. So Jay will just be updated based on that plan that he showed.
Okay.
And I believe it's, it might be a, a for, I don't remember which ones, but just that's why I highlighted it. So two of the plans will have an updated date.
Okay.
And it looks like you were able to talk to the applicant about a street name? Cause it says that they agree or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Anybody else? Okay, well, uh, do we need to vote this?
Just a motion to accept the letter.
Motion to accept the, okay.
And make a motion to accept the, the, the letter as drafted with the amendments discussed tonight. For, to, we adopt the letter?
Uh, no, just, it'll be, it will be forwarded to the Board of Appeals tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've had six meetings where we've done this. We also made our recommendation at the last meeting and so I think here we're just really talking about editorial remarks. There will continue to be a process at the ZBA. So.
You made new arguments at the last meeting.
Please, you're out of order.
I don't care because you guys are all out of order.
Sorry?
The vote?
Well, I, I need to say if we have a second?
Corruption.
Is there a second? I second.
Outrageous.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, yeah, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Then it passes.
Um, and I know on your agenda, um, Liz was gonna be here at eight, but.
I'm here now.
She's here.
Are you ready?
Oh, no, we have, we have blown through that too fast.
Um, so it's, uh, you know, you do have it down for eight. If you want, you can, if you don't mind, they can run through a couple of zoning bylaw stuff.
Right, we have other business that we could do and we probably should do.
Yeah.
Instead of proceeding with your item.
So I'd probably suggest if you do take up zoning bylaw discussions. You leave the two family and the accessory dwelling.
For last? Okay.
Get through the, the quick ones. I was able to send these to the building commissioner and he did have a couple of comments. So as you get to those, I'll, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay. Uh, so anybody got a favorite they wanna start with?
Remember, you can, you can choose which one you wanna take forward to town meeting.
Hey, yeah, it's, it's getting to be kinda speed dating time for your articles. Uh, the simplest one is relief from parking.
Oh, no, actually trailers.
Oh, really? Okay, well, all right, trailers is the easiest. So that's the, um. Hey, I don't, is it on this prohibited uses?
Prohibited uses.
Prohibited uses four seven one. So this is about, you can park a trailer on your lot. As long as it's got a valid registration and you're not using it to sleep in. Okay, so it's actually written in the negative here. It says it's prohibited to have a trailer without a valid registration. Or used for habitation on the property. So that's all we're doing is we're adding that phrase.
And I'm sorry, are tonight, are we just discussing these two that came out from Elizabeth earlier?
No, we're, we've got a pile of them. We've got like six of them.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Uh, so.
I mean, it's still early days, right? But we're, we're, you know, trying to get these.
This is gonna work so well when you get them done early. It makes my life so much easier.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, so your comment that it's written, um, so it is prohibited.
Yeah, it's a prohibited use, so that seems okay. I just, I stated it in the positive and now, in the affirmative, and now I realize it's written in the negative, so I'm saying that's the way it should be, of course.
Okay.
What are we doing with these?
Oh, well, so we're briefly discussing these and then deciding who gets which, right?
No.
No, we don't have to worry about that yet.
Don't have to do that tonight.
Okay.
We're just joking on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's. So this, without a valid registration or used for habitation on the property, that's, that's the addition.
Yes.
Okay. So that's really narrowing it down, right? So this essentially means you can keep a registered trailer that's not a, uh, RV trailer on your property.
Right, so you could keep your fifth wheel camper, your horse trailer, your landscape trailer. If you have a boat that's on a trailer. So currently how it's written, um, arguments have been made. It says right here that a trailer is prohibited. Um, and. Some people have argued.
If you own an RV, you gotta keep it off-site.
Uh, well, no, if you own, if you own a, like a tow behind camper.
Okay.
Your, your Winnebago, that's not, that's not a trailer. That's actually a.
I see.
Motor vehicle, and that's different.
Okay.
But, or your horse trailer.
Okay, so it, right now it says as our trailer and mobile, trailer and mobile home comma. So. The people have made the argument that it's applying to any trailer?
Yes.
Not a trailer home?
Correct. Cause they read it trailer and mobile home. It's not a trailer home or it's not a camper trailer or.
With the commas, I mean, it's trunk and white, we tell you, it's a trailer home, but, okay. So, and the intent of the bylaw here is literally a trailer that's being used for habitation to prohibit that.
But we believe that was the original intent.
Yeah.
But.
Well, and even, whatever this original intent, what would be our intent today?
The bylaw is not intended to prohibit somebody from having a landscape trailer or a horse trailer or.
And parking it by their.
But to your point, to your point, Burton, if there is something where. Um, can be provided to the building commissioner that says grammatically, because this is trailer and mobile home. Grammatically, where the comma and the and is means a trailer home. Um, that still wouldn't, that still would not. Somebody would still interpret that, that your, your tow behind camper.
Okay. Got it. So I, I think I'd be fine with a used for habitation. How does the valid registration play into that?
It, it was the comment from the building commissioner, so if somebody had, can't start. I guess, having numerous trailers stored on the property that, you know, aren't being used. But I don't think he has.
I mean, it's, it's salvage yard, junkyard and open air storage, you know, it, it's basic and, you know, if it's not registered, it's not really in use. It's a storage thing, right?
Yeah, I got that. Okay, so looking at that art, at that provision as a whole.
So, I mean, you can take out the valid registration part. That doesn't significantly change. The, the issue of, the bylaw wasn't meant to be that somebody couldn't have a horse trailer on their property.
Yeah. I wanna add it. If I were to write this from scratch, I would say without a, I would just. Trailer without a valid registration or used for habitation on the property, comma, strike and, mobile home, comma.
Yeah, I think that might be good, yeah. Yeah.
In the explanation, it does say that there's a concern with stuff being stored, so. Are we saying that we're not concerned with that or?
Well, I think again, if it's registered, then it's not simply being stored. It's being garaged or.
Contemplating striking that.
No, I think it can just be, I think we keep that in. I was thinking this was primarily about mobile homes. But then you see, I mean, then reading the rest of the article, it's clear it's about open air storage of junk in that's directly. Old trailers, right?
Okay, great.
Excellent choice to start with.
Uh, hammerhead lot? Our power grab from the ZBA?
They were all in favor of.
They, they love this, that we just put in the word planning and.
So that is the other, the other aspect is working on the explanations.
Yeah.
If they need, or if you think they need more work. I just heard. Kate's benefit, um. Also having these done a little bit more advanced was very appreciated by town council. Um, cause it allowed them to look at these beforehand, before they got, you know, a flood of other.
Ooh, great. We're moving up on their list of.
Um, I, I, I'll, I'll believe that, sure.
Uh, I believe, Elizabeth, you cited a few other applications that we exclusively review.
Um, residential clusters and residential compounds.
Right, so I just wondered if you wanna ta, highlight that. Buildable lots through this, you know, it's basically new stuff. Though I don't think new stuff is probably not a phrase we wanna put in the explanation.
No, I'll just, I'll add that.
Yeah.
Currently, or the special permit grant the authority for residential clusters and residential compounds.
Okay. Now can we do relief from parking?
Sure.
So the reason why I thought that this was the easiest is that this is using the identical. Uh, criteria that we have already been using informally to review the relief from parking. And it's just putting it into formal bylaw form.
And, and the question that always comes up in my mind when we talk about parking relief is, and, and actually. Burton, you might have asked this last time, or Nathan, if we didn't grant relief from parking, are we saying they have to build parking spots somewhere? Is, is, what's the alternative?
Not allowing a new change of use.
Yeah, changed use, yeah.
I mean, or building offsite parking.
Right, okay, or, or not allowing the change of use.
Within six hundred feet.
So really, the alternative is not allowing the change of use, right? If, if we were not able to.
Or an expansion of an existing use.
Yeah.
Okay.
Leasing, leasing parking space.
Um, you, you can um, only provide offsite parking with six, in six hundred feet.
I thought that it seemed odd to say, in addition to any other specific factors that may be set forth in this bylaw. I mean, we're in the bylaw, so.
Well, it's, it's just consistent with um, other wording for the Board of Appeals.
Uh huh.
Um, I think it's their requirement under eleven six for a special permit. Before you get to the special permit criteria, in addition to any other specific factors that may be set forth in this bylaw.
Hmm, okay, cause I thought that it would work just as well to cut everything up before the comma. Uh, you know, the determination shall include, you know, consideration of each of the following.
But our first consideration is whether it's unreasonable and is with, with, without substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And that's not in the list, so we have to include those factors as well.
Okay.
Which may be the same reason why it's stated that way in the special permit section. Yeah, they have the same thing, the adverse effect of the proposed.
Well, then, um. Well, then, um, okay. I mean, it's okay, it's just, it doesn't seem to add a lot, that's all. Because, I mean, we are saying right there, that we, you know, you could say, just in addition, the determination shall include consideration of each of the following. Why wouldn't that, I mean, you've got all the other factors that are set forth in bylaw in the previous paragraph, so we're just finishing that paragraph and saying, in addition.
I leave it up to the board.
Okay.
Just mirror what's already in there.
Alright.
I think it's the type of language that lawyers write, that scoop up everything, like, right in the settlement, say, from the beginning of time until the day that.
You can, you can strike it, and you can see if town council.
Town council wants to put it back, that's what I'd like to do.
I, my, my recommendation would be to keep it.
Okay.
The town council will never get, like, I would, I would, because you think we're gonna be missing something?
Because I, I don't think, if we, if you just strike before the, the, that, that comma. You have a paragraph above that says, you will consider the following things, and then it says the determination shall include consideration of each of the.
No, I said, in addition, comma.
Those are additional categories.
No, but I'm saying, in addition, comma, the determination shall consider, include consideration. You know, it's just like any other specific factors that may be set forth in the bylaw, I, I was just thinking, if I was a business owner, I would be like, thinking, well, do I have to read the entire bylaw? I mean, uh, any other.
Probably.
Section of the bylaw?
Your attorney should.
Well, I just.
Well, if there wasn't another section that was applicable, then we want it to be applicable.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, it almost seems like we're being too lazy to tell them which ones, I mean, you know, I, it's just, I don't know, it, it just sounds like legalese to me, it is.
How's this, we'll, we'll leave it in, but with, uh, a question for council.
That'd be great.
If that can be struck.
If we can strike it, yeah, okay, and then I had one other English language thing, which was, uh, the very last part of the explanation. I would say to incorporate. Alternative transportation options into their project from the beginning, as opposed to in- incorporate into their project from the beginning, alternative transportation options.
Alright, so one more time, sorry.
So, um.
To provide.
It, to incorporate alternative transportation options, the last three words insert before into their project. Instead of at the end.
So incorporate alternative transportation options.
Options into their project from the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And that reminds me, actually, on the prior one, I, I neglected to see that I had, on the hammerhead, I thought there needed to be a comma before the word since in the explanation. It's a very trivial remark, but.
Uh, this is in the explanation?
Yeah.
And where does it need to be?
Uh, let's see.
It's the, it's the long, last, long sentence, uh, after suited for the planning board.
Board, comma, since they have more expertise, and we're making that sentence longer now, too.
Great.
Okay.
Um. With the, um, um, with the parking relief one, in the explanation, where it says, um. Requires an applicant seeking relief from the parking requirements to provide more of a factual basis for the request and incorporate it into the project. Um, do we want to use the word factual, or, um, data, you know? I, I'm thinking data and, and factual are, are different, I mean, somebody, somebody that provides a, a parking study, are we calling that factual?
Well, but some, some of them, so the, so. A, A is data, but they don't.
It doesn't have to be that, right?
They, they, some of them don't, their argument isn't because their zoning bylaws wrong, um, so B isn't data, that's. C is data.
Which is something about the word, the factual basis for the request. Stuck out at me, but if it's not, if it's not raising any eyebrows with anybody else, I, it's fine, it's, it's in the explanation, it's not like, uh, a big deal.
It does suggest that. The alternative, I, I mean, we've had, been having a less factual.
Well, and not to go down that rabbit hole, but I'm just gonna make sure that, you know, I mean, that's what we are trying to do, I just know if there was a better choice of words for the explanation. I, I'll, I'll continue to think about it.
We'll think about a different word.
Yeah, I will, I will. Cause I think that explanation is really important, um, particularly for this one, this is, uh.
Yeah.
We've, we've been thinking a lot about this.
Okay.
Alright, um, now the one that mystifies me a little bit, the fences, walls. The front yards, side yards, rear, rear yards, fences, and walls.
Yep.
So, my problem with this one is, I'm not real clear, based upon the way this is worded, how this works. I, I just, I, I, basically, how does this prevent the construction of early tall fences or walls? That, that's what, it, it basically describes how you s, define a setback. So, I, I didn't understand. How it limited the height of a wall or a fence.
It, isn't it saying, you're side, is, you're measuring the side yard, from, from the sidewalk, from the, from the right away. You, it's. It continues, you cover, you go over steps, you go over a ramp, you stop. But, or you, you can go over a wall that's three feet tall and keep measuring back, but if you get to a five-foot wall, that's the end of your front yard.
But what if the wall is right at the end of your property?
It's saying, it, measure, front yard is measured from this, from the right of way to the nearest point of any structure, not including. Covered steps or ramps, or the construction of walls.
As a structure.
As a structure, four feet or less. From the, from existing grade.
So if the fence, if the wall is over four feet, and the fence is over seven feet, then it's considered a structure, and it has to meet the setback requirements.
Right. So it's not, it's not regulating the height of fences or, or walls.
It's telling you what a structure is for the, to meet the requirements for setback.
So you could put a, a twenty-foot wall around your house, as long as it was, it met the setback requirements?
Currently, you could put a twenty-foot wall around your property.
Period.
On that, on that.
Period.
But now you could, you have to put it within the setback, or, outside the setback. Okay.
So again, long before this ever gets submitted to the warrant, it will be sent to various people.
Yeah.
To look at it, who don't, one, like myself and the building commissioner don't look at it every day, um, but who actually, you know, work, let's say, in the industry, and. Have to work with the bylaw for their business, so, um.
What if you, what if your lot goes into, like, a hillside, and you've cut out from the, you've graded, you know, cut out there, and you've got a, a retaining wall? That goes down, not up, I guess it doesn't count?
Well.
Where, where within the property line?
It, it is your edge of your property.
I was gonna suggest under this wording, I think it conceivably could count, because it says, four feet or less from existing grade, it doesn't say up or down. It says from the existing grade, so conceivably, if you had a five-foot retaining wall, holding back a hill.
It's five feet down from the existing grade.
And my comment to this was, it more so that a lame, late person reading this. Would, would say, four, instead of saying from existing grade, I would say four feet. Or less above existing grade.
Above and natural.
Reading this at first, I was thinking, is that like another line on the property?
Well, of course, natural may not be the existing conditions, you know.
But, but that's how building heights are measured, right, from the natural.
Yeah, right, I. I just, the, the word from threw me off, and I think we really mean.
Oh, above.
Above existing grade, and that way you could build your five-foot retaining wall. So, and, and I think we touched on this before, the numbers would come up here with a four-foot wall, a seven-foot fence.
Or building code, after four feet, you need a structural engineer, you need a building permit.
So it is a structure.
Well, it's, it's currently a structure, it's defined under zoning.
Yeah.
Already, the zoning bylaw defines wall, retaining walls and fences, are in the definition of structure.
Yeah. I have, I'm just looking at this, I have. A probably eight-foot tall fence, at the, at the back of my property, and it is between me and a used car repair place. And I think both of us like this, so, does that mean that now I have to move that thing back to the rear yard setback? I mean, it's existing conditions, clearly, but.
Legal non-conforming fence.
Yeah, but can I repair the fence?
Yes.
But then, it also just seems like a reasonable thing to do, um, you know, again, if it's just between two residential properties, I can understand how this is kinda imposing. But, you know, eh, next to an industrial property, it's a little different.
Well, is this something you can get a variance for? Like.
No.
Well, eh, well, variance, but that's a big deal, yeah. This would not qualify for a variance.
Like what, what you're saying, like, and I'm wondering how often it would, you know, happen.
And, and I agree, it's probably not that common, but I'm now realizing that I will have an existing non-conforming fence, and I didn't even know I was doing anything that controversial.
Well, and, and you raised this point, so you wonder if other people.
Yeah, if other people have this situation, I mean, my neighbors also all have that height of fence, because they're a budding, red, industrial property.
And particularly if we're trying to incorporate more mixed use or something like that, are we gonna run into anything like this?
I mean, in the case of one industrial property owner, he built the, the fence on behalf of the neighbor.
Well, would he be able to do that, cause is this a residential, is this, is this applicable to only residential?
No.
No, okay, so this is the definition for any, uh, the setbacks for any.
Depends on the zone districts, some zone districts have.
Well, cause that's what I'm wondering.
Actually, my fence is technically within the industrial district.
So, that's what I'm wondering, like, if, if that could still be built.
Maybe it has a zero setback. It may.
And in which case, in a.
And, and then that would take care of the industrial.
Right.
Limits, yeah, that's interesting, though.
And what about me? And the.
Okay, what about you?
And the train tracks? So I'm on the train tracks.
There we go.
And I can't build, uh, like, I can't build a fence on the MBTA's property, could I build a fence at my property line that's very tall to block the train? You could, but out of the setback, I guess.
Yeah, but it seems.
But, we, I don't wanna give the train.
I think that this is gonna be problematic, I mean, I think a lot of people are gonna say stuff like that and object to this.
Let's go back to, uh, the originally why this happened is, cause, was this happening frequently? Or?
Um, it, it's just more and more residential developments and marginal land and.
They're having to build the retaining walls because of, yeah.
Yeah, and I did see the berm with the fence on top of it, I've seen that.
The berm with the fence.
Yeah.
So, once again, how zoning bylaw amendments get brought forth, you, it's just something that either myself or the building commissioner, you know, just see, and. You know, it's up to the planning board af, you know, after you talk about it, you look at it, you talk about it some more, and that's where. You ultimately, has it, has it risen to a level of it being, um, a significant enough issue that needs to be addressed, or, you know, can it. Stay the way it is, and, and then, you know, see if it in another year or so rises, um, or, and it may not, so.
Or maybe there's an approach that's a little more surgical, that's, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, it's, it has to do with, um, how zoning bylaws get first adopted, and then amended, and amended, and amended. And added, and, um, they don't get corrected as they go along, they just get fixed. As best they can.
Get patched up, yeah.
Yeah, they get patched, they don't get corrected, um, so it is after eight, so if you wanna, we can come back.
Okay, sure. So, Liz, come on up, and let's talk housing.
Are you gonna put, are you gonna put up on the screen?
Yeah.
So, I. Am here. To continue, um. So I think this was a different board when I started, right?
Partly, half of it.
Right, right, so I was, I work in the regional housing service area, and I support affordable housing in Concord. Um, and in support of, in the envisioned Concord. Planning document, there was a little piece about, uh, housing goals, and so we were asked to provide some data to help you, um, further that goal, and to come. So we've been working on some ideas, and so, this is an advancement, I think I was here, maybe in Jalon, and we've done some work on some of the data, and we'll see what you think. So this is all still kind of in draft, and, so let's see, so I think it's like a longer page, right? So you'll scroll down, so I'll do the top one, and we'll just scroll down, so the first part. Here, talks about, um. Oh, thank you, so this is a little shorthand, what we call the SHI, but I realize that there's a lot of jargon in here, so the SHI, uh, is the subsidized housing inventory that that ten percent is counted towards. Um, and so here is some, some pictures of how to decompose that, so here we have, uh, seven hundred and twenty-one units that are counted on that SHI. And that's broken out into, uh, market rate units and restricted, so you get credit in counting towards that ten percent for market rate units, uh, like at Concord Muse. Or at Warner Woods, you know, in those forty B projects where twenty-five percent are affordable, you get count, you get credit for all of the units in those developments. So even though Concord has this many units on the SHI, only this many right here are actually restricted.
Right, but the market rate units are all rental.
Yes, yes, so, um. So this translates here, so we say, okay, we're just gonna look here, and that would, how many restricted units here in Concord? Um, and there are those from the SHI here, these are both ownership and rental, and then there are forty-one restricted units that are not counted on that SHI. And those would be moderate income units, Concord has a, uh, moderate income program, where they're restricted at a higher level than would count towards the SHI. So there's forty-one of those, and that, so there's a total of, and we call these, um. You have capital A affordable, which is restricted units, and small A affordable, that things are just sort of naturally affordable, so we can use those kind of terms, and I think that the next rendition will kind of bring those more into focus. So these are what we call capital A, so there's formal restrictions on the property that limit the, the rents and the eligibility of the, the, the people who live it, the residents. So of those four hundred and five, right, you can see how many are owned, and most of them are rental, so that's another breakdown, and of those rental. The colors aren't really that great, but this is how many we call specialized, so these would be, uh, group homes, or other specialized assisted living, you know, not, yeah, specialized. Just use that term, um, and then we have here age restricted, and here would be non-age restricted, some people call that family housing, but, and I think we just call it non-age restricted.
But Liz, I don't understand, why have you, uh, only carved that out of the rentals, as opposed to all the restricted units, because, I mean, clearly there are age restricted. Units that are owned as well, right, Blackbird.
That's really the only one.
Okay.
But we could do that, I could add that.
I just didn't know why.
It's, it's, it's so little, but I could do that, sure, sure, that's, that's why we're doing this, is to see.
And do you have, um, remember, that's what's on the last page? No, you have something else on that page, do you have these listed out by property, either address or name?
I have all the backup for all of this.
You have all the data, okay.
Yes. Um, and here we have these, that, that SHI percentage over time, so, um. From two thousand all the way estimated to twenty twenty-one, the, this percentage, as in all percentages, has a numerator and a denominator, the denominator comes from the, the census every ten years. So, uh. So um there was a census here, there was a census here was the switch here, and then there'll be the next switch right here. Um and here were the percentages right here, you can see Concord Muse was really the big jump for Concord right there. Um in this note here, this percentage would drop to five point three one if the market rate. Rental units, I should say, were removed, just going back to that other chart when we saw how many market rate rental units are counted on that SHI. So people say we're over the ten percent, that's true from one counting perspective, but from here. Um how many are actually restricted in terms of rents or prices, it's really five point three one.
How does that compare with neighboring towns? I mean, I know that, you know, there are some that are below the ten percent and some that are above.
Got there through large rental projects.
Right, but then in terms of the, you know, the actual capital A affordable. Units, I mean, again, not not. SHI units, but ones that really are cheaper to own, non-market rate. Right, the four oh five, how do other towns do? Are they all in the same sort of situation in the fives? Five percent or are some of them doing better than or worse?
Um Bedford's the highest, Bedford has eighteen percent on that SHI. Index and when you take away their market rate rentals, they still stay over ten. But they're a real outlier. So most towns have half of their SHI are market rate units. About what you're seeing here.
Yeah, so we're pretty.
Towns that I understand.
We're comparable with the towns that have actually made ten percent, which is not every town, right, okay.
So in the RHSO area, which is Acton, Bedford, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln. Wayland, Weston, Sudbury. Of those eight towns, six are over the ten percent, and so in those six communities, it's really a picture similar to this. The actual numbers are different, but the percentages are are similar. So here's that SHI percentage here, so you can see that uh coming up in the future here. Uh we see projected two units for Jerome. On nine thirty Main Street, that's the new CHDC habitat project and Junction Village. So even with this addition of eighty-seven units, it's only jumping a little bit on the percentage. Because the denominator here is gonna switch. So Concord, we project is gonna add about a thousand uh new units to the denominator, that's a thousand building. Building units.
And how is that possible?
In ten years?
Ten years.
Yeah, but net new, we have a lot of tear downs. We've had three hundred new with the muse, but they were all in the, on both the numerator and the denominator. Uh where'd they all come from? I mean, it's not like. We have a lot of greenfield development here.
Um we can get more detail, I don't have those here, but this comes from the.
I mean, you even look at the number of building permits per year, it's.
It comes right from the billing department and it takes, it nets out the tear downs. So that's really been. Been vetted through the planning department, I don't have that here, but we can follow up with that.
I'm curious about that.
I mean, just with Blackbirds, you're gonna have whatever there, there's forty there, there's whatever, whatever projects have.
It's a lot of units.
I could see tens and and dozens.
So it's a hundred a year. All right, so we can look at that and.
And and it looks like it's nine hundred or even eight. Sixty or something, yeah.
So again, we do that with the building department.
Can you, can you touch on whether we still think that that Junction Village will be includeable in that twenty twenty-one calculation? Based upon the delays.
No, it's really hard to say, you have two pieces at play there, you have the numerator, like, when are they gonna get their building permits? And the denominator, when is that gonna be adjusted from the SHI perspective, right? So both of those are sort of moving targets within this eighteen month period.
Ooh, that sounds like we're getting close.
Right, so even back when you look at back here for Concord Muse. Right in here, Concord actually got to ten percent and then dropped below ten percent while Concord Muse was under construction. So there's always some little dipping like with these projects when you're just right at that census. So the census day is is April first twenty twenty, so that's when people knock on the doors and that's when the count is. And then it takes a good year to actually, you know.
Come up with the numbers.
Come up with the numbers, and the first numbers are like the redistricting that goes to the president and and some of that, so when will the housing data? Be available, when will it be available to DHCD who does the SHI? And when would they recalibrate all the SHI data? So those are question marks that we don't really have the answer to, the last time they did it, it took. It was August of twenty eleven. When the SHIs were recalibrated. So that would be August of twenty twenty-one. And then, so if you look at that, then we think that Junction Village would probably pull its building permits in the spring of twenty twenty-one. So, could be there, it would seem that Junction Village would be in the numerator and not the denominator. They won't have their building permits by that August first, I mean, that April first twenty twenty. And that's when your, that's when your numerator is set, so that's some kind of benefit. Right, reduces the denominator. To that answer.
Well, and then, so would, are those eighty-three included in that seventy-seven twelve? They're not?
So, so in other words. As long as those building permits are issued by August of twenty twenty-one, we're likely okay for including that in. That calculation, if we miss that, then the next calculation is four years later?
So the numerator gets added anytime, so as soon as the building permits are issued, you'll get other numerator. So if the denominator gets updated before the building permits, that's the situation where Concord would drop below the ten percent.
And I'm sorry, so so I was assuming that this was, there was a four-year pattern to this, that it was done once every four years?
No, every ten. The denominator.
The denominator gets done every ten, okay, so.
Numerator gets done as it, as life happens, you know, as building permits are issued or or.
Presumably always a little bit of this looping cycle.
We're adding units all the time, as soon as they're eligible.
And then how many units above the ten percent numerically would we be based upon this estimation? Is it thirty, thirty-eight? Thirty-seven.
Right, so here's the math, so you need uh six hundred and eighty-six and you're at seven twenty-one.
No, no, but I guess by twenty twenty-one, you're saying we'd need seven hundred and seventy-one units.
Seven seventy-two, you have.
Okay, you have to round up, okay, seven seventy-two, and you're proposing that we'll have. Eight oh eight. So. So that's thirty-six units over.
Right, so there's a couple of things in there, also in there are group homes that come from the Department of Mental Health. And so those are confidential and the town has no control over those, so those fluctuate some. So some of these units, as they get added, you know about the unit and you're permitting and you're very conscious of that, some are, as I say, confidential, they just come in. But it also feels like Concord should be looking towards uh some project to stay above ten percent for the twenty thirty. So this would be good for the twenty twenty, but not for the next ten years. Seeing that these projects take ten years. Minimally, minimally, exactly.
And does a group home, just out of curiosity, does that count as one unit or is it multiple?
No, it's each bed. Okay, so good feedback of that, we'll get those questions answered and put in here. So here we have, I'm trying to come up with some other terms besides tear down, right, we all call it tear down, like. I call it reconstruction, I don't know how that would work. Um but let me just see, in your packet, but what we did is, give me a, this is just. In your packet, you'll see the actual data behind this, so there's two, um there's. So we looked at all the. The reconstruction of houses, right, or the tear downs, uh over three years. Um and we then mapped out the change in value and the change in square footage. And we were on, we were able to do that with fifty-eight of the eighty homes. Um some are still owned by developers and some are this and some weren't, were a little bit more problematic. And we found that, it's not, I don't know if this has really been a surprise, right? But okay, so now we can't see what that number really is, it's two hundred and forty-eight. It's almost the same, two hundred and forty-eight percent increase in value. And two hundred and sixty percent increase in square footage. So um. I guess, so this is the before reconstruction, what what do you think about the term reconstruction? Tear down, are you, are you better off with tear down?
I think it depends on the audience and what we're trying to convey, because.
So, the the term tear down has been something that's been in the comprehensive plan for. Twenty years.
I mean, reconstruction is what the bylaw says, you know, when we're talking about nonconforming, it's, you know, in order to reconstruct. But, I think. It tear down is clearer to people like what happened.
That's why we're here to sort of have a little dialogue about this, present the data that I have and get some feedback on on what to do with it and how to. Uh tweak it a little bit.
Out of curiosity, the data that you show for the fifty so houses that. Were torn down, that looks like from about two thousand and fifteen?
Uh sixteen to eighteen. And you can see there's a, there's a sheet in here, maybe, wait, maybe I can.
And just, I mean, just out of curiosity, did you pick a couple of years to look at?
Um we wanted something that was a little current and I had the um.
So this is not all?
Oh, gosh, no, but it's three years.
All the tear downs for these years.
Those three years, yeah.
Right, so we wanted to be current, um, yeah, and just the data that we had, I had the MLS data. For the sale side of the equation, so then we got the building permit data, so more recent data is just tracked a little bit better. It could have been different here.
And so, you know, these eighty represent.
The address here, but you can see, uh, yeah, this is just whatever.
Yeah, these eighty represent no net new units and. They even may re- represent a reduction in units if a two-family was torn down and turned into a.
Right, and so here's the, the demo permit was issued here, yeah.
I mean, on the surface, it shows housing's becoming less affordable in Concord, but on the other hand. I I think what you're seeing there is the cheapest house you can buy in Concord is about five hundred and ninety thousand. And anybody who's gonna redevelop a property, there's been, you know, forty percent on acquisition, thirty percent on construction, thirty percent on profit. So the numbers. The, and I mean, it almost couldn't be anything but this, you know, they've gotta increase the size, cause they've gotta get their. They've gotta recover the high acquisition costs, but I'm wondering how this connects to um SHI? Because is it the case that we're seeing some houses that would qualify as affordable or becoming grossly unaffordable or is it a dissent?
Generally, um these here, these homes right here are not usually uh capital A affordable, they're the lower A affordable. Right, so that they would not be restricted, cause usually they're older. Uh the state doesn't favor converting older homes that need work. To, you know, cause it's just a little bit harder for low-income households to be in those, so it's generally not what's what's done with these homes. This is very, we did this analysis in Bedford, and these percentages were the same. So Bedford probably starts here at four and a quarter, where Concord's five ninety, right, so it's just like where to start and where to end is.
But these, you're taking one of these houses, regardless of what you think of the wisdom of mansionization or whatever, these tear downs. This, this, these, when you take one of those houses and and reconstruct it into a house three times the size, does that. In increase the problem of. The SHI, the SHI.
The SHI is really all that capital A restriction, but it removes moderately priced homes from the market. So that's what we call naturally affordable, right, so people looking for moderate homes, they don't have restrictions on the property. But they're just more moderately priced, they're more naturally affordable. And and I have some data on that, it's 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 still really in draft, but we'll go through that coming up. But as you would imagine, for a number of reasons, both the um the increase in the value of the land. Plus how many homes are being taken out of the inventory for this purpose. The number of homes uh that are naturally affordable have decreased.
Liz, just a graphical suggestion. You see how, while the increase is actually even a little bit higher percentage in the lower one. That the slope is not as high and that's because you had a three-line header, maybe just. Abbreviating square feet might give you on the two lines.
The hidden tick marks there are aligned properly. This is one thing to like get all the data and then we were like at the office like trying like, would you like this chart? But it was interesting data and um, yeah, it it. It confirms probably what you've already feel, but there's specific data to talk about that. And then you have the row by row of each property. Um and I think there was one in there, I think it was number of property twenty-eight, my favorite one, I went, where is it? Yeah, this one right here. So someone bought it for a million four fifty, and it was already thirty-three seventy-six square feet. And then, and then.
Torn down.
Increased it to like sixty-eight hundred square feet and sold it for four million dollars.
Well, the ratios are all still the same, though, I think that your your hypothesis is definitely proven.
No, they weren't additions, they were like total construction.
Wow, tear down one point four million dollar house.
Right, exactly, I'm like, it, I was like, the dates are wrong, like, how, you know, trying to match it, oh, I guess this is really what.
Did this get in the wrong column? No.
So there's that.
The after becomes the before.
The next thing we looked at was, okay, let's get this a little bit smaller, was how much senior housing is in Concord? And I'm not sure about how this graph looks, but we looked at five categories. So condo ownership, which is really Blackbirds, it's really what we're talking about there. Uh the Concord Housing Authority rental, which is its own kind of category. Continuing care, which is, that's really all the deaconess. Is that their name of their place? Newbury Court. Exactly, Newbury Court, that's what I was looking at. And then the assisted living, that's really Concord Park and Junction Village. And then skilled nursing, there were a few different tier ones there and there's a couple of other ones. Uh and you can see here, um how many are current market and current affordable, there's really affordable like in all those categories. And then how many pending, you know, cause you have some projects pending, like in here, you're gonna have the um. Concord Park has that expansion coming on and Junction Village, and both of those have affordable units and then pending market. So it just gives you some, some view, I'm not sure if this is the right way to show this, but the different kinds of senior housing. And market versus affordable.
Is there no affordable in skilled nursing because that's medicated?
No, there's not, yeah, I don't, there's none that's a, that's set aside for a lower price point, and I'm not, I don't know. Anything more than that, right?
You know what I would do with this? I would, I would flip the rows and columns. And then I would just really have two bars, one for market that was a stacked bar with current and pending. And one for affordable that was current and pending. So in other words, you you have the rows that. You know, for, for condo ownership, CHA rental, et cetera, cause I I don't know that. I guess, I guess we care that there's. This many skilled nursing versus that many continued care, continuing care.
You might be able to combine this and this. Um I mean, but clearly this is different, like you wouldn't wanna glom it together with some of these other ones.
Well, continuing care, is that what so-called independent living? I think that that's what they mean, independent living, and it's like Newbury Court, yeah.
Newbury Court, it's it starts as independent.
Independent living, then the next one's assisted living, that's the gardens at Newbury Court, they have that too, and then they have the nursing home. Yeah, they've got the full gamut, but I guess. Yeah, they've got the full gamut, but I guess the other question is what would you expect to be seeing or what are we trying to achieve?
Well, that's, that was what your job is, right? My job was to.
The age and place. What, what's the, what is our age and place goal, you know?
You know.
Well, so I think the, the graphic does tell you something as far as, you know, pending market, pending affordable. As you look at the envision of Concord Plan and how the population is going to age in Concord, there's, there's nothing on the horizon for continuing care or skilled nursing.
Right.
So, yeah, that's it, so if somebody really wants to age in place, you know, after assisted living, that's it.
But nursing homes, aren't there totally different ways that people fund nursing homes that aren't related to? You're, you're out of the whole affordable housing phenomenon by the time you get to skilled nursing, I think.
What, you mean by insurance?
Yeah, all the insurance, government insurance and private insurance.
Medicaid covers.
Yeah, exactly, so it's a, it's a whole different funding. I just.
But, you know, currently there's only three hundred and twelve of them and that's it. So, you know, as, you know, it's over sixty percent of the population is gonna be over sixty, you know, in, very soon. You know, you're, you're, you're looking at, this is just another element of housing diversity that, that isn't in the community.
We should find out a little bit more about the rate structure for the skilled nursing here.
Yeah, and we're talking about about ten percent of our units in town here.
Yeah, so fine, we'll find out a little bit more about that, so.
Yeah.
So, just something, right? Do you want me to just wrap up, like tell me, like, am I talking too much, like what's your, give me the five minute warning, maybe, or.
Okay.
All right, so this is a really hard slide, I don't even know if I can even talk about it. I kind of threw it together and it's, I have the data, but the presentation's really weak, I'm just gonna say that right off the bat. So we're gonna, so here we're looking at, um, prices and incomes, this is what we would call naturally affordable. So this is, uh, who can afford what? And, uh, it's, it's really too many concepts to get in here. So first I'm gonna start with who, what are we talking about? The labels here, we, we, we talk in these AMIs, the area median income, so trying to figure out who is that? So in looking at the annual report, like a hundred percent AMI, so that's a police captain. So here it's, it's the grade level MP six. So if that's a single earner of a household of four, they're an AMI one hundred percent. The one twenty is the senior managers of the town and say exactly what the titles were because you know all the people by name. And then a hundred and fifty percent is, you really know them by name because there's only a few of them. So again, you have to make some distinction or some assumptions about being single earners in households of four, right? Because if you have a dual income family, you know, but just to try to put some, something about like, what are we talking about here? So I think it's really to start here, over time, the, I picked these three dates, right? So the, the area median income, right, incomes have gone up in the ten years, right? So this is just like numbers to show that. And so what, what people in those jobs can afford over time has also gone up. Again, so that's really not a big concept, right? Like you can, you don't even need all this data to understand that, but, uh, so here's specifically how those AMIs have gone up. So what was a hundred percent AMI, uh, must be the blue line, um, back in two thousand and nine was ninety and now that same job title, if you will, would be earning one thirteen.
Yeah, but Concord's median cost of ownership in terms of percent of AMI has gone up faster than that.
So this is just the income side, not what's available for housing.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's what's causing our crisis is the gap is growing.
The gap is growing, so.
Or has grown.
This was just one side of the gap, right? So this was like what can people afford at what level of income?
Yeah.
So this is just what, what, the affordable prices. So if I'm that one hundred percent, I could afford, back in two thousand and nine, I could afford three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar home and now I can afford four forty-three. So that's, but, but then I haven't done the other part, well, now how many, how many houses can I buy? So I have, you know, so like in here, and I haven't really charted it out, so back here, you could buy fifty-one, there were fifty-one houses that fit right here in this blue, blue line.
Okay.
And now there are twenty-four, so it's about a hundred percent reduction.
Yeah, fifty percent reduction.
For the single family homes, the condos not so much, the condos have really held their value over the years.
Right.
Why, why are condos presumably less affordable? I mean, I'm wondering why those have, have, you, somebody with the same income can afford less condo than single family.
Condo fee. The condo fee, exactly.
Stout fee.
Yeah, but I mean, living in a single family home has fees too.
So how, how you measure is you take your salary, you say thirty percent of that salary can go to housing. And how, a condo fee, like a five hundred dollar condo fee is part of that housing, so it takes money away from what you would be able to put into mortgage. So if I don't have to pay my condo fee, I can pay a higher mortgage so I can afford a bigger sales price.
Yeah, but you got all the same costs that are on top of it, they're just not taken out.
In terms of sales.
They're not taken out on a monthly basis.
Right, well, that's it, so that's why it's the same, you're the same person, but in terms of sales price of what you're looking at, what's affordable to you is gonna be different.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's, I'm, I'm still working on that, there's that, and then I have something else that didn't even make it to the package, it's that fresh. About the accessory dwelling units.
Ah.
Um, and we're really trying to work on this, this is hard. Okay, that's, so, um, I know you're working on the zoning and that's, that's great and we're trying to understand a little bit more of, um, what kind of housing is being provided through the accessory dwelling units. So we have been working hard to try to get a list of them. This is, this is, this is the first step that was harder, way harder than we thought. And we've been working with Elizabeth and, and her department and her staff closely and the assessors and we have a list and we are, uh.
Oh, wow, you're sorry.
Going to send people a letter.
Wow.
Um, and we are going to, to ask them, we're gonna do a little survey monkey, and this was our draft, of finding out what, who people, who are you renting to? What kind of rent are you getting? How long and, you know, like whatever, these kinds of answers to help, uh, understand the housing element of the accessory dwellings. I know that you're, you're really working on the zoning part of it, which is great, but then, as I say, like, like what kind of housing is that bringing to Concord? So this is again a draft and we're, this is, we're sort of working down this and once we have the list of the accessory dwellings or the, the, um, some other term we were using also, like a subsidiary unit on the property to get into like sort of smaller second homes, second families or something. And this, so maybe, maybe we'll just tweak some of the questions and see if we can understand a little bit more and then, so as, as you expand the accessory dwelling, we can have a baseline of how, what, 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 what kind of housing would be projected for the increase in growth. Now I know you're looking for how many more accessory dwelling units will be created, which we're, we're still kind of trying to understand, like how we could possibly get at that. But once we have the list, we can kind of see who's living there and then we can kind of start to move that forward.
So are you gonna start with a list of, um, from the assessor data where there's more than one building on the property?
It, it's, it's been a really lengthy, involved process.
So we have thirty-four permits that were permitted under the zoning bylaw sessions four two two one and four two two two, which is a two-family or additional dwelling unit between two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen, and those thirty-four of them. And seventy-two properties that have two or more structures on a lot, which is a specific use code for the assessors. And then other properties with the assessor use code type thirteen, some, some like individual ones.
What was that, so it was thirty-four seventy and what was the last one?
Uh, thirty-four under the accessory dwelling and seventy-two that were, um, two or more structures on a lot. That's kind of where our lists are now, I don't really know.
And this is gonna be a self-reporting survey for people to respond to?
Yeah.
So you might get a ten percent response rate?
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, I mean, like, I, I would be really hesitant to make any, okay.
Better than what we have now, that's all we can say, because we have nothing now really, and just try to get something.
I mean, I didn't, I don't know what, um, I mean, so we're talking about a hundred properties.
Mm-hmm.
You want the financial aspect. I wonder if we could, I don't know how budgets permit in terms of like an actual door-to-door survey of a hundred properties. You could certainly do a visual survey that might indicate what the use was, you wouldn't be able to get, um, financial information unless you actually knocked on the door and talked to somebody and they answered you.
So I think we were looking at who's renting there. You know, is it families, is it people you know, is it, is it, you're putting it on the market? And I think that the stretch goal, if you would be, is to understand how much rent is being charged.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we have a few data points on the rent from, we have like one in different towns. And we're finding that the rents are really, they're almost like market rents, so it's not, even though they're tiny, you know, some units are tiny, um, market-like, I would say, anyway, so.
Two, two suggestions if you're trying to get this out, like, would you be willing to offer them, them an incentive, like if you fill this out, we'll send you a Dunkin' Donuts gift card? I don't know anything about your budget or if you know, and the other thing is, would you be willing to share the data that you find with them? Because sometimes people take surveys if they know they're going to see what other people responded to it. Because I mean, it's all public information which you collected, right?
Yeah, we say a specific property name will not be released.
No, the name wouldn't be, but your aggregate results would be, I mean, I don't know if people would be curious and they're like, wow, other people are renting. Or, I, I don't, and, and the only reason I mention these things is to see if you could get a better response rate.
Good ideas, thank you.
People do not like to respond to surveys.
Yeah.
You know, you never know and I don't know how budget, you know, allows, but, and also, um, it seems like these are gonna go in the mail.
Well, I think we're gonna do a survey monkey also.
You are, but I mean, like to get it to people, you're gonna have to mail it and then they're gonna go online and do it.
Um, I think we'll also do a self-addressed stamped envelope in there.
Oh, yeah, right.
Um, you know, whatever we can do to make it easy and then we'll see.
Well, that's, that's exciting, I love data.
And I think that we're gonna do this, um, probably in the other RHSO towns, figuring that it's, it's a similar kind of phenomenon of who's renting.
It'd be really valuable for us because, I mean, as we're doing this bylaw, people ask us, you know, what do we expect will happen, you know? And the best source of data is our neighboring towns.
Right. And part of it is we don't know enough about what's happening now, like how many and who's there and is it the mother-in-law or is it some other, you know? I don't even know, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should have a big thing on the top, this is not the census.
That's what I have.
Thanks, Liz. Really informative. Okay.
One second, are we gonna see Liz again or do we have any other questions for her in the future and like? Do we, and, and the reason I was saying that is because one of the things that before, you know, Kate came on, I think you talked about, um, you know, a thousand more units and, and density and things like that, not specifically about a thousand units, but you talked about the changing demographics and how, um, increasing the units doesn't necessarily mean the impacts that we think it's gonna have on schools and stuff like that. And I just feel like that's gonna be when we talk about, um, two families or, um, even, you know, in the future, talking about bringing in another, um, larger development, uh, to maintain that. People's questions are always gonna be, how is this gonna impact schools?
Yeah, exactly, so that is a key question, so one of the, yeah, so when we talk about two families replacing what's a single family unit, we have various dimensional requirements that limit the size of the building one way or another. So then, what is the presumption in terms of how many school-age kids in a two, two, two-family units versus one, single-family unit? And I think it may end up being a wash, but that's just my hypothesis, I, I think that data would help us a lot.
So that was something that I might be able to work, um, get the, the list of, you know, these accessory dwelling units and, um, I may be able to work with the town clerk on that.
Yeah.
That is definitely not public data, but she can give me an aggregate number.
Well, that's all we need, we don't need like.
Even just do that, right, with existing two-family homes, not even the accessory dwelling.
Well, that's.
Whatever, yeah.
Children in households under the age of eighteen is not public.
Right.
Information, but the town clerk can provide you that.
Yeah, I think it'd be great, I mean, I guess we first need to know where we have two families, well, I guess we do know two families, it's the accessory dwellings that are harder.
Right, exactly.
But even there, there's gonna be similar question.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And I'll give it to your question, right, anytime that you want me to come back, just talk to Elizabeth.
Yeah, well, we're six months away from town meeting, so I think four months from now, we might wanna have another session.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you.
We're returning to the.
To the bylaw amendments that are being proposed, yes. So do we wanna go for a big one now, accessory dwellings?
Did you, did you decide about fences and walls?
Like whether we want to talk about this year?
You know, I'm, I'm wondering, it, it would make things absurdly complicated, but I, I think you guys have raised some really good, personal examples of where tall fences do make good neighbors. And I think this is probably a responsive part to tall fences often not making, you know, good.
Right.
If, and I'm thinking, can we inject in to this, this is how they're calculated, except where the, the two different properties have two different use, uses.
See, I, I felt pretty good at the end there where we were talking about, well, but the setbacks, you know, in industrial, the only problem is that like if my lot literally is, and mine isn't, but if, if my lot literally is residential abutting, um, industrial and I put the fence at my property line, I still have this, this issue. And it's like, well, you could say whichever is less, the setback of the abutting property or mine, I don't know, that sounds really kind of potentially problematic, but. I'm just trying to say, I guess I've raised this issue, I don't know the answer and maybe we could take it under advisement and see.
And that's where, when you, so this is where you start trying to address something that's been brought up, you just, this could be an issue. But the minute you try and develop that into the language of the zoning bylaw, where you get those unintended consequences. And so that's why you, you go through these exercises and this is another reason why I'm so happy the planning board has started doing these in, you know, June and July instead of, you know, October and November. Because you get to have, you know, think about it, mull over and, and you get to try and identify those unattended consequences and that's, that is one, so. You know, has there been, you know, is, this is just something that I'm gonna say has been noticed from just a, a staff level? Of, okay, we're, you know, this is what we're kind of seeing and it's, you know.
Yeah.
Will it bubble up to, you know, level of, you know, significant concern? There hasn't been a public, you know.
Outcry.
Outcry to the building commissioner. So, you know, a, a, again, if this, this isn't one of those where, you know, town staff is saying, no, no, we, we really need to address this now, this was just one of those.
I don't have anything against trying to, uh, come up with something for the next town meeting, I just think that there's more to think about. And I don't have the idea of how to fix it.
Yeah, to address your thing and so maybe you don't try and address fences, but I think the issue of retaining walls.
Yeah.
Is, is.
But what about the, the retaining wall down versus up, so should we say up? Do we care about down?
What, a footing?
No, no.
He was talking about, so let's say you're, you're on a slope like this and your lot line's on a slope and you dig away within, say, you know, inside what would be the typical setback and put a five-foot retaining wall. Right, so it's, it's a wall that is, has a.
And it's at the edge of your property.
Greater than four feet from the existing.
Great.
Great, it just happens to go down from the existing. Great, it just happens to go down from the existing, great, instead of up. And to me, it seems like that, that's a, that, that's a building commissioner issue, is it a safe wall? It's not presenting the same issues to a resident, a, a budding property owner who is seeing
Putting up a big barrier.
Yeah. They just have to worry about falling off, off their side yard, yes.
So, uh, yeah.
So I think that the answer would be
I, I agree, so.
To have some preposition that would say above, or up, or something, rather than, right now, it just implies that any difference. So it could be considered five feet down as well as five feet up.
Yeah, I think we're gonna change that from, from to above.
Above.
Okay.
And then we're gonna go back and think about it again? Oh.
Or go back and just think about this?
I, I think that, though, I mean, the examples of fences that you've mentioned, I think are a problem. And it would be nice to fix it. I just don't know how to fix it without breaking other things.
Are, do you really think your fence is over seven feet?
I think it's an eight-foot fence.
Wow. That's a very tall fence.
It's a big fence, it actually, it needs repair, and repairing is gonna be ridiculously expensive, but yes.
That's what I'm moving towards to keep my dog in my yard.
So do you wanna continue to think about this?
Yes, let's keep thinking, yeah.
All right.
Continue to think about that one.
Okay. The accessory dwelling. So, I forwarded some comments to Elizabeth on this one. Some are trivial and some are more substantive. Well, one was, I just asked, why is two-family mentioned in the title of it?
Um, because that is actually the title of section
Of the section. Period, four-two-two, okay. And then, the next one was, we spell out the special pri, you know, permit criteria granting language here, but we don't in four-two-two-one. Isn't it just any old special permit? The sixth criteria of any special permit?
So you don't, so, so let's, so, so I think it would be easier to talk about one, and then talk about the other, and, and not go back and forth between the two. So for additional dwelling unit, you, you don't, there, there is no, you know, you, you have criteria. If you want to go over something, you need to get a, a special permit. And you've added just that, the literal app, you know, applicationals requirement, that unreasonable, and that. So that's the standard when you're talking about an item in here where you're granting somebody the ability to request relief from that requirement. So this right here is, is that, that statement that's used in the bylaw in other cases where somebody is, has the ability in the bylaw to get a special permit if you want relief. So this statement right here is, is not in eleven-six. So eleven-six is the actual section in the bylaw dealing with special permits. And there's six criteria for the granting of a special permit. Deals with impact on the neighborhood, fiscal impacts, community need, traffic, utilities, natural environment. So those are criteria for a special permit. This statement right here is that standard that's found elsewhere in the bylaw when somebody is looking to, for relief from a requirement in the bylaw. So if somebody wants to go from seven fifty to a thousand, you can request relief to the seven fifty to go to a thousand, you need to get a special permit, and then the board also has to make that one binding. So that's, that's the difference.
Okay.
Going, going to the two-family bylaw, which is four-two-two-one.
Right, it could be new construction, it could be all kinds of things.
Construction.
Yeah.
And you're not, you're, this section right here, you're not, it is a special permit. You're not looking for relief to, that statement isn't in the four-two-two-one bylaw.
Thing is.
Because it's just a special permit. So this sixth criteria in eleven-six
Okay.
is the criteria used, so.
That solves that one, so then the other was, I was suggesting that we strike the fines, after fines that, get rid of a literal application of this requirement, be unreasonable end. Because I think that that is for a case where you're looking for relief because you have some really special circumstance. But this isn't because you have special circumstances, because you just wanna have a bigger unit, or have it closer to the setback, and nobody else is complaining about it, so it's okay. It's not that, you, there's no way around it.
Right.
Right, and I think we discussed that with the ZBA, that we were gonna strike that, or have some softer language.
So there's two things in this bylaw that I could not remember or find in notes.
Okay.
And that was the one.
Yeah, I noticed in the minutes, there was no note, there was nothing in the minutes about that. Because I thought that was like the, where we had more light than heat in that meeting was about coming to that conclusion.
And the other item which the building commissioner very quickly reminded me was, I think you actually struck K.
Yes.
Which is the requirement for landscaping.
Right, I asked to strike K again, yeah.
Which he'll be very happy to.
Yeah.
As he pointed out, there is, there's no requirement in the zoning bylaw for any landscaping for residential, you know, single-family homes, or even currently, you know, additional dwelling units.
Yeah, and then I just had two other things, which are, that clause H leaves out the word unit, which is used in every one of the other clauses. You say accessory dwelling, not accessory dwelling unit, but all the others do.
Item H?
Yeah.
Oh, dwelling unit, oh, right in the beginning.
Yep.
All right.
And then, at the end of the first paragraph, I'd say, I'd put a comma before provided that. Right, the end of the first paragraph. Unless there's some convention that we don't do that, because I'm sure some language is used throughout the bylaw.
Where are we again, in sorry?
The, the first, it's right before all the conditions, you know, all the clauses.
For the purpose of providing small additional dwelling units to rent in the town. You wanna add?
No, it says, so it currently says, or a detached accessory structure, provided that, call it A, B, C, D. And I was just saying, comma, provided that.
The very first introductory paragraph.
Yeah, four-two-two-two.
I will, I will add it, it will actually have to be bold italics and be part of your bylaw.
Oh, because it's not-
Unless I can get the town clerk to agree
Okay, I mean, it's not the end of the world if that, comma doesn't go in, it's all right.
She has the ability in here to fix certain non-substituted changes to numbering of the bylaw and future amendments. Oh, she can only change numbering.
Okay, yeah, a comma can mean a lot. In this case, it doesn't, but it can.
I'm confused. This, this isn't, this, isn't all of this stuff new?
I thought we were replacing the whole section.
So you can add a comma, great, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Sadie?
Just go to bed.
Oh, yeah, no, I have a whole half an hour to wind down.
I, I have one question, and it's on the, in, in, in subsection B, the word incidental. Says the additional dwelling unit shall, shall be used incidental to the single-family dwelling. And I'm one, I'm just wondering if that is necessary. We, we know that it's got, for example, square footage limitations.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a holdover from the previous.
It just, it, it could be read a few different ways.
Yeah. No, in the past, it was intended to imply that this is a little thing, it's compared to your-
From the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think you can probably just say the additional dwelling unit shall occupy no more than seven.
Yeah.
And you can delete all that, because anything that's only seven hundred and fifty square feet, as we have seen from Liz's previous thing, is clearly incidental.
A rounding error.
Well, well, you actually could imagine a house that's say a thousand square feet, and somebody wants to put a seven hundred and fifty square foot one on, and somebody argues, well, that's not incidental.
Then they will have a small house still.
I said in theory.
Oh, in theory, yes.
It's okay, I think. They, you know, many of the houses that are like that now, they couldn't do it because of all the other restrictions, setbacks, FAR, whatever, you know?
So the, the one thing, and I don't expect you to do this tonight, because, you know, I'm hoping you won't go till eleven,
No.
is expanding on the explanation, and I don't expect you to wordsmith that.
For accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like this explanation, though. We made a lot of changes, so we're
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, so here's, just for your information, here's the one thing that I'm, I do not know that will pass. Different towns do their wording of their warrant articles differently. And so there's a question on, you know, sometimes the warrant article for zoning, but you'll, you'll see that first paragraph will be add, you know, after the word parking, add the word and, comma, and, and it goes through and lists the whole thing. So I'll be getting feedback from the attorney general, or maybe town council already knows, so I don't have to go that route, whether we can just word it that first sentence differently, so it doesn't have to specifically go through each and every comma change. So just so you know, that's something that I'm
Yeah, that's interesting.
looking to help make the actual warrant article easier for people to read.
Yeah. Okay. Can we move to the two-family? Four-two-two-one. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
I did get feedback, one question so far, and same thing with two-family, but also with the accessory dwelling unit. On the square footage limit, will that include basements, open and screen porches, and decks?
Well, FAR would not count it.
FAR does.
Count, it doesn't count the decks and screen porches.
But it does count garages.
It does.
Garage, but not basement?
Um, no, basements, open and screen porches and decks are
And gross floor area, because
Includes everything.
Including the not decks.
Bless you.
Excuse me, not decks, correct.
Uh, but screen porches? I don't think it would include screen porches.
The sum of the horizontal areas of the floors of a building measured from the exterior face of the exterior wall,
Hmm, okay.
or from the center line of a wall separating two buildings, not including any space where the floor ceiling height is less than six feet, eight inches.
Okay, so it would be
So I'd have to ask if screen, open or screen porches are included, but.
I think it, it does. But, so, are we gonna, I mean, I don't think this is gonna be a real, should we say gross floor area must be a minimum of three hundred and fifty square feet? I don't think it would make sense to quit living area, because we don't really leverage that in the bylaw. I think that's the, that's the most solid
Definition.
definition we've got, gross floor area.
Right, but the question is, are you gonna exclude garages, basements, open or screen porches from that seven hundred and fifty square foot limit?
Oh, in the one we just talked about?
Yeah.
May I? What, what's the term we use in the FAR, 'cause See, I think we're talking about the, we're, I was not anticipating that three fifty included a garage.
No, no, the seven fifty.
So now she's, she's going back and forth.
Or either one, the minimum or the max.
So for the accessory dwelling?
Okay, but gross floor area would include a garage. By definition, it would include the garage, so unless you
Yeah, but if, but for an accessory dwelling, it's not the exclusive, I mean, I, I wouldn't anticipate that the garage would be of an exclusive use of the accessory dwelling unit. Instead, what would come to prevail would be the floor area ratio. That, that's where you'd hit the limit first, probably. I just don't know, how do you decide whether that garage is part of the accessory dwelling or not? It could be part of the primary dwelling. You're not deeding it to anybody.
It was, it was a question, so. So you might have a house that's got a three-car garage, and they build a detached garage with an accessory apartment above it, and that detached garage is for the accessory apartment, and so.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like it should count?
Doesn't seem like it should count. Yeah, I mean, again, the extra garage and the unit itself will all count towards FAR. I think those are the, that's the main concern we have, yeah. So.
Are you seeing anything else that
Do we have any living area? Do we, we don't reference living area in the bylaw. I think I recall that from FAR, the first round of FAR.
But it is called out in the, in the two-family.
What about a basement?
For the accessory dwelling? And, and do we use the words like condition space?
Again, how do you decide that the basement belongs to the accessory dwelling?
It's, they're building a brand-new detached
Well, if it's detached, you're right. Yeah.
And, and it's got, you know, seven hundred and fifty
Doesn't it completely matter if it's finished or not finished?
No.
Why?
It has to do with, if the definition is six, a height ceiling height is six-eight, doesn't matter if it's finished or unfinished.
Then, then I would count it in the total floor area.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should count it.
These days, everything is being built to use to maximize
Yeah.
square footage.
Well, then, seven hundred and fifty square feet.
It's gonna be a three hundred and twenty, seventy-five square foot, right, because
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about
Well, no, it's gonna be seven hundred and fifty, and they're using all of that space, I mean.
Yeah.
So something, something to think about.
Yeah. I have to say, I was thinking, I was thinking of living area, but we don't have that, so. Okay. I think that's all of them, isn't it?
So two-family.
Oh, yeah, two-family, sorry, we, yeah.
So the building commissioner asked the same question that the board had asked previously about, so you share a common wall or floor? This question is, do you, do you wanna say percentage of wall or floor, or? And
You know, with a minimum of a hundred and fifty square feet of mutual coverage, or something, you know?
So he and I talked about this for a little bit, and, you know, kinda went, you know, back and forth. And the only, I guess, response that I made is not, well, it's, it's a two-family dwelling by special permit. And so the Board of Appeals will have the ability to, to evaluate somebody's you know, proposal to either build new, or to add on to a house and, you know, convert it, and so if it's only connected, you know, can't be connected by a trellis, tunnel, pergola, and, you know, she shares
But it can be connected, well, and we, we talked about, again, connected garage to garage, we don't like.
Well, but maybe it's a one-car garage that faces this way, and a one-car garage that faces this way, and how it sits on the lot, but that works perfect. So I, I think when you, I think you can't, you cannot control bad design for somebody who wants to get around the zoning bylaw through the zoning bylaw.
Just with the special permit process.
It's a special permit process, and bad design, or somebody trying to circumvent a requirement can be captured in that in that aspect.
Any other comments on that? Any other comments on that? I mean, I thought otherwise the language was fine, so.
Uh, again, in the, um, I don't know if you want to expand further on the example, but he did notice that I do need to delete um, leverage existing building types wherever possible. I think that bullet needs to be deleted, because we're not talking about detached structures for two family.
Ah, okay, good point. Yeah. Okay. All right. So that brings us to minutes.
Um, before you move on, um, from that, the only one that I um, didn't recall whether there was consensus was the section five, four, five, which is the outdoor events. Whether the board wanted to think about adding philanthropic as a use that could go for a special permit for outdoor events longer than three days and held outside. After speaking with the building commissioner, we're, we're, um, we're gonna get some clarification hopefully from Town Council. I don't think agricultural uses actually even need any type of special permit to hold an outdoor event. If they want to hold an outdoor event, I think they get to. So I don't think the bylaw necessarily needs to be changed to address agricultural.
Okay.
Events, but we're gonna hopefully get clarification on that. But as Burton looked at me with that, the question, this is fairs, bazaars, fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers and dances. In all districts, any building or premises owned or operated by educational, religious organization, private lodger, lodge or club may be used for fairs, bazaars, antique shows, supper, dances, similar events provided, no such event shall continue for more than three days. And such event shall take place entirely within a building, please supervision. But you can, events that don't conform to this section, you can get a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So the question was whether to add philanthropic uses to that list.
What's, what's precipitating this suggestion? Is there um, somebody who's trying to, wants to do that and they can't? They don't wanna get a special one?
So.
Is that not very questionable?
There, there have been um, some philanthropic uses, uh, where they also have like an educational component.
Okay.
Um, and so they've looked to have outdoor events and go through the Board of Appeals as an educational, but you know, sometimes that pushes the edge of that envelope. Um, and it would just, it would be more appropriate that if they're, you're philanthropic use and you wanna have an outdoor event, you go through a special permit.
Like, we have the cultural districts now, and we're doing all kinds of things in the cultural districts, so, I don't know.
But municipal is different, so.
Right, no, but there are organizations within there that could be doing.
Is it the property owner that needs to be philanthropic or the event holder that needs to be philanthropic?
Um, it, it's, it's gonna be the applicant and who's holding the event. So um, uh, currently the Rotary Club gets a special permit from the Board of Appeals to hold Oktoberfest at Merrill Farm. Because they are actually the one having the event, so they, they're not an agricultural use.
Can you give me a, I mean, so I, I guess I'm thinking about, so what's the purpose of the special permit? Why would it not apply to the type of event that philanthropic or the other categories that are already in there? Versus, I don't know, um, say a for-profit carnival or side, or I don't know, like, can you give me a sense of what? I mean, what, what's the review of that permit?
Um, so it's the notification of a butters, the legal notice in the paper. You know, what, you know, what time is this gonna have? When is it gonna start? When is it gonna end? Um, you know, is there night lighting? Is there outdoor amplified music?
And, and I'm sorry, the current categories that already exist today are educational.
Religious, private lodge or club.
Why couldn't philanthropic fall under private, or it was private club, private lodge?
Uh, there's actually a definition of what a private club or lodge is, and it's not philanthropic. A scatter quick club is not philanthropic, so that's what that term is for. So again, hmm, not something, you know.
We've talked about this for a while, so we have to figure out something.
This is just something that brought, the building commissioner said, this is something you might wanna think about, but again, not not risen to the level of this is a critical problem. So the board has quite a bit on its plate. I don't have an issue with tabling it.
Can, can you give me a sense of what rises to the level of special event? Let's say, um, your, uh, the Concord Museum, right, uh, which I presume is, would cut it as a nonprofit, maybe get under philanthropic. And you have, um, your regular museum hours, that's not a special event, you have maybe a annual.
So they came forward a couple of years ago, got a special permit to do their outdoor film on the grass.
Okay.
And came through as um, educational component of the museum.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And, and so this is, is this only outdoors or is this outdoors and indoor?
Uh, only outdoors.
So it would be, I'm just wondering what rises to the level, eh, so let's say your um, uh, one of the, one of the historic houses, it's a nonprofit, and you have a regular Saturday tour, but you want, then you have an, eh, eh, like an evening outdoor cocktail party for your funders, you know, or, you know, is, or, or, you know, I was just at gaining ground, right? So they had a thing that was a, an outdoor once a year type of thing. Is, now they're farmers, but.
They're farmers, so um, so uh, the Old Man's. Is going through their special permit process for outdoor events. You know, they're following, they're following under as, you know, educational, um, which, you know, you can, certain outdoor events, but you know, it's, it's, it's. Some people may not see it that way.
I mean, to me, it seems like as a category, I, philanthropic or non-proph, philanthropic falls into some of the same, like, the logic as educational and, and, and the rest, but.
But they're, they're individually defined in the bylaw, separate things.
Yeah, right, but, but, right, but I mean, ju- just thinking about whether it makes sense to add them, seems to fall into the same type of category. On the other hand, I think we do probably have a lot of philanthropic in it, and institutions are scattered around town that people may not be thinking of. Oh, they could be having a big outdoor event on a regular basis. And it maybe works now if they're having to get special permits, but if they weren't having to get them, you could have issues of.
No, they would, they would still have for an outdoor event, they, that's what they would.
But so right now, they couldn't get a special permit?
If, if they weren't able to, to align themselves in any manner of the educational.
Oh.
They would not be able to.
It would still have to be a special permit.
So, so today, they can't do a special event if you're a philanthropic.
Outdoors.
Outdoors, it doesn't.
And not aligned with any of the other categories.
Oh.
If they could demonstrate how they were aligned with the other category.
If you have a big proponent of adding it, then it, there's still a special permit review. Yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry, I totally.
Sorry. Well, I'll, I'll draft it up, you can look at it and have another conversation about it, how's that?
It would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's after my bedtime, I'm sorry.
Okay, should we move to minutes?
Please.
The August sixth minutes, I guess we can start with. I just thought that the last paragraph on the first page use authorize instead of authorized. So, okay. And that was my only comment. Any other comments on August sixth minutes? Okay, August seventh minutes, I already made this comment, but I just thought that the minutes left out the most important enhancement to the accessory dwelling bylaw that the ZBA proposed during the meeting, which was, you know, loosening the special permit criteria and so, you know, we didn't have that literal application of the requirement would be unreasonable. I, and I think that, yeah, the transcript would show that they, they, we had a discussion about that.
And I think you were right, I think it, and it was, so you discussed um, that section and it was agreed that that should be deleted.
We should, yeah, change it, yeah. I don't think we came up with the exact wording there, but we just said, yeah, we, we weren't intending to make this a only in the most dire circumstances, can you, yeah.
Um, so to amend the minutes, read the planning board and ZBA.
Agreed to.
Discussed and it's in whatever item or.
Agreed that the, yeah.
That statement.
Right.
Literal.
Was too stringent in that.
Was too stringent and agreed to delete that.
Yeah, okay. That's my only comment on August seventh. Though it is kind of a blow-by-blow account. And then those are the only two mi- sets of minutes I reviewed. Were there others that I missed? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay. All right, then I think that, eh, any, eh, we've got any liaison reports?
We need to, we need to move to.
Oh.
I, I moved to adopt the minutes as amended.
A second?
The minutes for uh, August sixth and August seventh, two thousand nineteen.
As amended. Second?
The second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, there. Okay, any liaison reports, uh?
I went to the chair breakfast.
How'd it go?
I liked it. The food was terrible. No, I'm just kidding.
I've, I've often heard that and I've experienced it.
Uh, you know, it was nice to see Gary there, and again, he is looking for somebody to attend the uh, October seventeenth meeting, like a liaison from the planning board.
Okay.
So uh, we can talk about that before that comes up. Brian Folds from the Climate Action Advisory Board wants to somehow schedule some time with us. They are working with KLA Consultants, uh, to create a plan about achieving goals of carbon, or of the, these carbon reduction goals. And kind of hearing about, you know, our sustainability criteria and what we're doing, um, he wants to make sure that we talk. The Historical Commission said that they are reviewing the demolition delay bylaw, and they're researching other towns, um, to improve the definitions and clarify. Perhaps by twenty twenty-one, I mean, twenty-one, I just, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
And uh, Junction Village, the name is gonna, likely gonna be changed to Christopher Heights Building, so just in case we hear something. I, I think it's probably always gonna be.
They're all called Christopher Heights, all of them.
All right, so, but you know what that is then?
We'll see.
Okay, whatever, um.
There's no hill in the vicinity, but.
Okay. And on, uh, there's gonna be an open meeting, uh, open meeting record law changes, uh, on November second from nine thirty to noon, where the town clerk and the town moderator will talk a little bit about any changes to open meeting law, um, effective meeting management, if anybody is interested in that.
This is a workshop?
Uh, it sounded like yes. I, I didn't catch the name of it, but it was about the open meeting law changes or case of anyone.
Sorry, are there changes proposed on the table now?
I, I, I don't know if the open meeting law changes regularly, and Linda or Gary, if you, if you remember anything differently than I do. This is in the townhouse on November second, uh, like a, a morning, it seems like a workshop, where the town clerk will kind of go over any, any changes that there have been to the open meeting or open record law. And um, and then the moderator's gonna talk a little bit about town meeting and then also about running effective meetings, so. I don't, I don't know specifically if there are often changes to open meeting law, and they, but it sounded like they were at least gonna highlight some things, right?
I think we said, was it Michael Lawson talking about the town governance workshop?
Town governance workshop, thank you.
So I think it was more like just an overview of open meeting law for folks who aren't as familiar with it.
Thank you.
And then the town meeting process and effective, but they do this town governance workshop every year for new members of committees. November second, nine thirty, then, eleven.
I think that's all the.
The news that's printed.
I think that's all the good stuff. I, I, oh, and, and we had a, somebody who was interested in joining, I don't know if she ever followed up with you. Darn, did I, did you get an email from me? Okay, sometimes I wonder if I hit send. And so, oh, I did bring up the part about green cards and, um, and specifically asked about, you know, could people serve longer than their uh, terms, or, you know, if people have served before, and they said although it's an administrative policy, there's not a law against it, so if you had somebody who wanted to serve, you know, they could, we could make a case for an exception as long as we're not, um, you know, the intent is to make sure that everybody who wants to serve has the time, has uh, time to serve.
Nancy's gonna follow up tomorrow, but we um, did hear that somebody has submitted a green card, so um, she'll follow up with the select sports office tomorrow and forward that to you, Matt.
Okay, great. Any other liaison reports?
I'll just very quickly, I just, I got my package tonight from CPC.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Nice and thick.
Just quickly run through things, uh, we have our, and we get our site visits this Saturday where we go and look at all the applications, but to just give people a really broad brush overview and remembering that I would be coming back seeking the planning boards input if they had any interest in any of the particular projects later in the year. CPC is Community Preservation Committee, which uh, reviews applications for Community Preservation Act funding, which there would likely be this year, which, I guess between one point four and one point six million dollars, and we've gotten applications for a total of two point six million dollars. They are, uh, and I ju- I just have the titles here, but the, there's some improvements at White Pond. Uh, improvements at Juroe Park, which is the new, the, the land that was purchased uh, two town meetings ago. Dredging, dredging of an area of Warner's Pond, more or less in front of Juroe Park. A, a, uh, a project to build a, a, a unit of affordable housing on Commonwealth Avenue, right there at the entrance to Juroe Park. As some people may recall, there was a house there that was taken down with a commitment from the town that there would be another affordable unit. One thing about that is squeezed into the end of the lot, but because of the way they're connecting it, because they're connecting it to the sewer system of the house next door, somehow they will be able to, which is already actually a um, Concord Housing Authority house, but it's not on our restricted list. Both of those houses will get onto the SHI. So two for the price of one, uh, two for the very expensive price of one. Then there's a potential outdoor recreation area at the Minuteman Arc Facility, right next door to where we were looking at the, at the uh, Starment Site Cleanup. Another proposal from the um, DPW to upgrade, or not upgrade, to rehabilitate Emerson Field. They've been funded um, in the past, and that project um, has gone up substantially in cost. The Masonic Lodge, which we funded a project to redo the, the um, the pointing of the, the brickwork, which I always thought was hilarious, because they're the masons, but um, they now need a roof. That building is essentially, um, you know, has a lot of issues. Then a proposal from the Holy Family Rectory, which is the, the rectory, uh, right there on this Monument Square. I don't know anything about that, that was being presented tonight, I think. Restore the clock tower, um, uh, I think it's got a different name than that on First Parish. The, the Unitarian, big white building over, overlooking uh, square. And uh, funding to improve the gardens at Butrick House, which is the house on the hill above the old North Bridge. And uh, those are all the ones on our site visit schedule, what else?
Oh, so, y- you're not making a, a site visit for the Assabet River Pedestrian Bridge?
Oh, I skipped that one, the Assabet River Pedestrian Bridge, right? This is for, uh, actual design work, um, you know, the, the preliminary study, design and permitting work. With a, uh, with a, obviously a very large price tag coming in the future for construction. Um, and a few things to roughen in there, like the funding for Elizabeth Rusk's group. Um, towards that and funding towards the, the town staff for supporting the CPC. Anyway, that's, that's in a nutshell.
Sounds like a another year.
A lot of, the predo- as in years past, predominantly things coming out of, um, uh, planning and, um, land management as opposed to, not land management, what's, Marsha is director of.
Planning and land management.
Planning and land management with.
I think we only have, um, not talking RHSO or administrative stuff. I think we only have Warner Pond dredging and.
The bridge.
Assabet Bridge.
Oh, really, okay.
The others are through the, are through the, um, town manager's office.
Okay.
Or Public Works.
Uh, and then, uh, Elizabeth and I are gonna be presenting to the League Women Voters, uh, Town Government Committee this Thursday afternoon at two P M. at Fowler Library on, uh, the housing choice initiatives that we have. I've been drafting our presentation based upon all our stuff we've been doing, but outreach is continuing. So they invited me to come speak and I roped, uh, Elizabeth in to come with me. Um, but others are welcome to come along too, if you wanna help.
That's different from the thing we got, the correspondence we got from League Women Voters, right? This past week, asking for collaboration with the planning. Didn't we get something?
I, I've gotten correspondence about this event, but I think it was just addressed to me. I'm, I'm not familiar with, maybe it was a CPC thing.
Maybe it was CPC.
Huh. Eh, anyway, okay.
Having a transportation form.
Okay. All right, anything else other than public comment? So I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that we received letters from Cindy Mara, Tanya Galis and Mark Galis. Uh, leading up to this meeting, I think they were distributed to the board, we all had a chance to review this before the meeting. And so now I'll open up to comments from the audience. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
I'm sorry to miss Gary's portion of this, I was at another meeting where another member of his committee was presenting, um, similar outreach, and I congratulate Gary to, for all the outreach that they're doing. Um, I think it's, having lived here through the Starment process for I would say thirty years, but maybe it's just twenty. Um, and having been told how terrible it is, now Gary's committee has to persuade the town that we want it. We should do something with it.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, which relates to your further discussion about housing. And, um, at the other committee that I was at, there was a big push um, for consideration of, of housing. More on the affordable side than on the, um, what's the development up the hills from, um, Black Birch. Uh, rather than the Black Birch type, type of housing, which is million and a half, uh, had it more on the affordable. And apparently it's fifteen to thirty-five acres of, uh, really land there that I hope the town will consider for affordable housing. I was upset at your handling of the old Bedford Road process. I, 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 I I think when citizens appear for hearings and you go and you have some deliberation. I think the least that you can do is, is let citizens speak. They, I hear now that she submitted, one of the citizens submitted a letter. But maybe there's some explanation that she would like to make, or another citizen would like to make. And I, I just think it's, in our form of town government, it's too bad not to, but that's, she is prerogative. I would, eh, I work in a small town in Maine called Harpsville, Maine. And for a lot of our government meetings, everything that gets discussed at the meeting gets posted on the website ahead of time. Everything, all the documents get posted. Concordit has the technology to do the same thing. I, I, I don't know how big the, eh, eh, there was a reference made to packet that Liz brought, Ms. Russ brought in. You appeared to have it on your screens. If it's available, I think it's great to have the citizens who are in the room have that available too. You, you had your zoning materials on the website, but I couldn't find Ms. Russ.
Who is on, it's actually a very safe. I, I, I pulled it up off the com- planning site.
Off the planning data?
Yeah, it wasn't actually distributed to us.
I'm sorry?
It wasn't distributed to us personally, we had to pull it off the site if we were gonna see it.
Okay, then, then that's my bad, I couldn't find it. On the, on the accessibility stuff that you're doing, we're not the first half, the town is going through that. Um, I don't know if Mass Municipal Association would have some, um, materials on it. I know that, um, that, uh, Newton spent about thirty years fighting over, uh, getting it, adopting accessibility, they have just done that in the last year. I'm gonna have lunch with someone who's involved with that battle.
Give me accessibility or accessory dwellings?
Accessory dwell, dwell.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, and Dykesbury, Rockport, uh, and I believe Lexington.
Yeah.
Also have some good materials. We have a terrific town planner and she's supporting you as much as you can, but there may be some other resources that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And, um, I'm, I'm disappointed at the CPC articles listed in that, once again, it seems like we're really spending much more money on open space than on housing. And I think we need to have a concrete shift on the CPC funding. I realize that there are certain categories that forty percent gets allocated, but about sixty percent of it, or fifty percent of it is fungible. And I hope that with our, your leadership of affordable housing and mid-cost housing that you will encourage Boris Slakman and other entities in town to think of more projects that can be funded in housing through CPC rather than dredging ponds this semester. Thank you. Oh. One last thing. Your recommendations to the ZBA that you made on September tenth were written up and presented to the ZBA on September twelfth. September twelfth, ZBA took a vote on things that you had recommended that the ZBA get done before they vote. They didn't get them done, they took a vote on September twelfth. And other items that the ZBA voted on on September twelfth have been voted, have been filed with the town clerk's office. The ZBA's ruling on December twelfth, they voted on after your recommendations. I'm not aware that they have been submitted.
The Board of Appeals has ninety days from the close of the public hearing to file their decision with the town clerk.
I understand that. Then it gets, the citizens have twenty days once it gets filed with the town clerk.
Correct.
There are four items that have been filed with the town clerk's office from the, uh, from the HTC meeting on September five. But the HTC decision hasn't been made, filed with the town clerk's office that I'm aware, neither has the ZBA. I think there's something out of whack here where the, your recommendation gets to the ZBA in two days. It gets published at noon on the twelfth. Citizens have essentially four hours to get comments into the ZBA meets at seven. And then it totally disappears in the, in air. Um, and, and I think there will be some further discussions of this process. Uh, and I'm sorry that the planning board's recommendations to the ZBA weren't taken more seriously. And I hope that the minutes that you had posted on your agenda for tonight haven't been presented. Maybe we can get a draft of those posted publicly so the citizens can have what the minutes are gonna say about your meeting on the tenth. Which was a good meeting, there was a big discussion, but that just had also vanished. Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Hi, my name is Mark Galis, I live at sixty-two Prescott Road, thank you for allowing me to speak. We have a gigantic hole in our PRD approval process that should trouble anyone concerned about negative impacts of any of the current PRD proposals being shepherded in good and bad ways to the zoning board of appeals. The planning board has just demonstrated in its approval of today's letter, Ray, four thirty old Bedford Road, that its recommendations to the ZBA will first be stripped of any adverse criticisms of the project by the public or the board. This effectively hides from the ZBA information critical to its action. For the four thirty PRD, this includes widespread citizen objection to extensive tree clearing and to the, uh, uh, project's neighborhood unsuitability. Additionally, the proposal includes an assumption that our ZBA will allow a dangerous precedent-setting, unwarranted, overly loose loophole interpretation of our current zoning bylaw four dot two dot two dot one requirements. To permit the combination of two greatly expanded, uh, existing structures into an artificially joined six thousand two hundred sixty-nine square foot two-family structure in order to allow a double town sewer connection on a single lot. Why does our planning board not give the zoning board of appeals the full pro and con set of information it has gathered on a project in its public hearings and examination of documents and input from town departments? By the way, there have only been one and a half planning board hearings on this recommended four-unit plan. One first vague preliminary plan without details in May and one very rushed, uh, 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 plan presented a mere two weeks ago. And this is the recommended plan that still leaves many in the neighborhood and town with their objections unanswered and now erased from the planning board's letter to our zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I think we're ready to adjourn, thank you.